And I grabbed the other pair because I have them, I mean, they're almost like the same prescription, but they're like real broader and they're more like metal. And Rocky, he just doesn't do audio. Just see, and I'm like, I'm on him. I'm sure you're blast clean.
For big weeds.
Yeah, and when Karen, today, Monday, she went back, and she went back for.
We're not bringing that contract up under the, for the business of the plates?
Yeah, yes. Also, it looks like the sheriff's actually may pick it up. And just what you hear from Joe. So, yeah, I'll kind of do two motions and just, yep.
So you're trying to confuse me again?
No, maybe.
Just say yes, right?
Another nomination for me.
Yeah.
To get that other nomination on next week's agenda, I think it's a contact information.
All of that.
Wait, we're ready for next one.
Ready? Now, following the meeting of the Carvin County Board of Commissioners' order, please rise for a moment of silence, prayer, and the Pledge of Allegiance. The Lord give her a life and source of our freedom. We thank you for the many blessings you have given our county and country. Today, we ask for your strength to see us through the COVID pandemic. Help those who are suffering from depression and stress of coping with this virus, and a speedy recovery for those who have contracted this disease. We ask that you assist our medical professionals and our emergency responders in treating those that are ill from the virus and protect them in their service to others. Help our researchers in finding a cure and a vaccine to prevent the threat, friend. Help us to recover financially and emotionally. We ask this in your name, amen.
The allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
These proceedings are being recorded for the sole purpose of constituting the accuracy of written minutes. Shakes are reused eliminating recorded records of these proceedings. Approval of the minutes of the previous meeting held June 25th, 2020.
Move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nostine?
Yes. Are there any guests concerning county business at this time? Hearing done, we move on.
Next item is the opening of bids for the Carvin County Correctional Facility Water Systems Control Building Equipment and Typing Rehabilitation Project. And we have one bidder, Bognet Incorporated of Pasleton, Pennsylvania. Full amount bid? Two hundred fifty-six thousand dollars.
Okay.
That's it, I think. It's difficult to read.
Why wait? You said you'd have it ready?
Ten percent bid, Ron.
All right, so I'll make the motion, move to table for one week, transmit the Bognet bid to our engineer for a technical review and recommendation.
I'll second that.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nostine?
Yes.
Report of executive session held?
There was one executive session held on Tuesday, June 30th, 2020, for personnel reasons.
What time?
I've got to write down the time, 1:30?
10:30.
10:30.
Next item is the Department Report to Budget Transfer.
Move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nostine?
Yes.
There are no supplemental appropriations. Expenditures, approval of check numbers 214169 through 214271 for expenditures for the general fine clearing account totaling one million, three hundred fifty-four thousand, two hundred five dollars, eighteen cents.
Move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nostine?
Yes.
The Treasurer's Report.
Move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nostine?
Yes. At this time, we'll reassess our regular commissioners' meetings. Now call the monthly meeting of Salary Board Order.
First item is the approval of the minutes of the Salary Board Meeting held June 4th, 2020.
Second.
Mr. Sverchak?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nostine?
Yes. Are there any guests concerning Salary Board business? Hearing done, we'll move on.
Report of executive sessions held?
There was one executive session held on June 15th, 2020, at 10:30 a.m.
Next item is building and grounds. Establish the positions of three substitute part-time cleaning persons at ten dollars, thirty-two cents per hour, grade three, step A, effective July 2nd, 2020, excluded from the retirement plan, not anticipated to work 1,000 hours.
I will make that on discussion.
Yeah, I'll second that, and Rocky, if you could explain.
Yeah, um, what this is actually for, to establish these jobs, a couple of weeks ago, we actually went from five cleaners, we had five, we had three full-time and two part-time, to clean, to make the system work a little bit better, what we've been trying to do, we added a third one on, and these three people here will actually be like fillings when somebody is off. Because what we put in place, we need them six people cleaning, because that's what's working. You know, we've proven it for a couple of weeks and it's working, and we really don't know what's going to happen to us in the future, so we actually have a couple more people here if we have to, if we have to have more cleaning in the courthouse or wherever, we could dip into this pool and we'd have a better cleaning system. I mean, it's, it's been working for the last couple of weeks, so this is like the last step in, in trying to get this together.
Right, and Rocky, the one thing I would add, you know, we, we are working the renovation project, that will be an additional sixty-five hundred square feet of cleaning, and so in preparation for that, that allows us to develop the, the cleaning pool for that.
Exactly. Thank you.
Mr. Sverchak?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nostine?
Yes.
Children and Youth Services, establish the position of one county casework supervisor one at seventeen dollars, ninety-eight cents per hour, grade S seven, step A, effective July 2nd, 2020.
Move to establish.
Second.
Mr. Sverchak?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nostine?
Yes.
Establish the position of one county caseworker two at sixteen dollars, two cents per hour, grade twelve, step A, effective July 2nd, 2020.
Move to establish.
Second.
Mr. Sverchak?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nostine?
Yes.
Change the rate of one county caseworker one from fourteen dollars, ninety-seven cents per hour, grade ten, step B, to fourteen dollars, fifty-three cents per hour, grade ten, step A, effective July 2nd, 2020.
Move to change the rate.
Second.
Mr. Sverchak?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nostine?
Yes.
Commissioner's Office Parking, establish the position of one part-time parking meter attendant at ten dollars, thirty-two cents per hour, grade three, step A, effective July 2nd, 2020, excluded from the retirement plan, not anticipated to work 1,000 hours.
I'll move. Second.
Discussion. So what I'd like to recommend, we modify this position to a not-to-exceed, so a term position for one year, after which we can reassess it based upon full implementation of the kiosk system.
Well, we can address this at the annual salary board, if we decide at that point in time, we should have a better feel at whether we want to create it in the new, under the new 2021 salary board positions.
Well, then I would modify then the term position not to exceed seven months. I'd like to give us the full year, again, and if we want to go ahead and adjust it at that time, we can some detail.
The position we're creating is not creating more expenses, it's just giving us a larger pool of people, just like we did for the cleaning in the previous motion, because now we have a situation where we have a retirement all of a sudden because of medical condition. We had one person out on a knee replacement, I believe he's going out on another knee replacement, we had nobody to, we're actually losing funds when they cannot fill the positions, so I would just recommend moving the motion as is.
And, and this is something like, this, this position is created, but we're not going over the regular hours or budget that, I mean, is that what it is, Ellie, is that sort of like where we're trying to create something that we have time to cover all the positions? Because I know we did miss one where it's coming up and we're not going to have coverage for a couple of hours.
Well, we're in the position we are in today with having to establish that because our hiring practice in the past didn't provide us sufficient flexibility to have workers when we need them, if I recall. This Friday, we'll not be manning a booth because of the position we're in, which is the lack of flexibility, individuals who have been hired who are very limited in their work availability hours. Therefore, I have no assurance that we're going to be hiring someone who's going to be able to fill these gaps. So again, I'll go back to that same, again, I don't want to exceed.
Well, then, if that's your concern, shouldn't we be creating two positions to give us a larger pool? If you recall, we had a full-time position that we did not fill when a person retired, and we have been manning that booth with part-timers. So it's basically, this position would be created to replace that full-timer, as well as maybe we should second, put a second part-timer on to help us ensure, because one of the people we're losing because of medical reasons was very reliable and good amount of hours that he was putting in. And that's the other issue we have to be concerned about, is the amount of hours these people are putting in, those that are available all the time. From some of these positions, the four in particular, the people are only working on major weekends and they're not available because of other jobs, or they don't want to work additional hours or do the ticketing in the booth, they're just parking attendants. And even with this new system going to kiosks, which we hope to implement next month, you know, we're still going to need the additional people, it's just that maybe in creating more positions, they may not be getting as many hours as they were previously, but they are part-time positions.
Okay, we have, we have a motion on the floor, as written.
Second.
And we have a second. So I call for a vote. Mr. Sverchak?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
No.
Mr. Nostine?
Yes.
Corrections, change the rate of one part-time corrections officer from fourteen dollars, twenty-six cents per hour, grade six, step G, to twelve dollars, thirty-one cents per hour, grade six, step B, effective July 15th, 2020.
Move to change the rate.
Second.
Mr. Sverchak?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nostine?
Yes.
Parks, change the rate of one seasonal park ranger two from thirteen dollars, forty-five cents per hour, grade three, step J, to ten dollars, thirty-two cents per hour, grade three, step A, effective July 2nd, 2020.
I'll move.
Mr. Sverchak?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nostine?
Yes.
Change the rate of one seasonal park ranger two from ten dollars, sixty-three cents per hour, grade three, step B, to ten dollars, thirty-two cents per hour, grade three, step A, effective July 2nd, 2020.
I'll move. Second.
Mr. Sverchak?
Discussion.
Mr.?
I'm sorry. So I, I would just say, as we think about the salary board for, for next year, you know, we have raised the, of the salary for the lifeguards up to eleven dollars, seems to be a little bit of an imbalance there, so I'm just asking, you know, deconsideration as we look towards next year and getting equivalent rates for the DDM responsibilities. That's all I have.
No, that's good, and I think some of the things like our, when you want to have quality people working for us, they got to have quality pay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Mr. Sverchak?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nostine?
Yes, I agree with those comments, definitely.
Tax claim, change the rate of one administrative assistant repository specialist from thirteen dollars, eighty-four cents per hour, grade nine, step A, to fourteen dollars, twenty-six cents per hour, grade nine, step B, effective July 15th, 2020.
Move to change the rate.
Second.
Mr. Sverchak?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nostine?
Yes. Any further business for the salary board? Hearing done, we adjourn the meeting. At this time, we'll reconvene our commissioners' meeting.
Next item is the Personnel Report.
Move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nostine?
Yes.
Correspondence was received as listed copies will be made available to the press upon request. Adult probation for approval and execution, a grant application to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency for funds in the amount of sixty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars for the coronavirus emergency supplemental funding for the terms of March 16th, 2020 through March 16th, 2022. The grant will be, the grant will fund the following reimbursed agencies for personal prevention equipment purchased as a result of the pandemic, purchase of equipment distributed to agencies, and to perform the COVID-19 testing at the correctional facility.
Move to approve and execute.
Thank you.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nostine?
Yes.
Advertising, authorize the advertisement of public notice regarding the Carvin County Agricultural Land Preservation Board meetings to be held on July 14th, 2020.
Move to pause the run.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nostine?
Yes.
The bid award for the Correctional Facility Water Storage Tank Maintenance Project, approval recommendation from the county engineer, to award the contract for the Carvin County Correctional Facility Water Tank Storage, Water Storage Tank Project to Mid-Atlantic Storage Systems of Washington, Corvus, Ohio, for the bid amount of one hundred fifty-six thousand, five hundred and ninety-two dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nostine?
Yes.
Words and authorities, the area agency on aging advisory board, a resignation, the representative of consumers, Anthony Dimaselli, family caregiver program, N S One, O E P A.
Move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nostine?
Yes.
Appointment to a two-year term to June 30th, 2021, representing the consumer, Joseph Zedlin, the Jim Thorpe Penn Kitter Senior Center, Jim Thorpe, Pennsylvania.
Move to appoint.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nostine?
Yes.
A one-year term to June 30th, 2021, consumer representative, Thomas Williams of Perryville, Pennsylvania.
Move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nostine?
Yes.
Reappointments, one-year term to June 30th, 2021, community representative, Virginia Ginny Tats Tuskow of the Blue Mountain Health Systems, Belle, Pennsylvania.
Move to reappoint.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nostine?
Yes.
Representing consumers, Grace Ruggiero of Blue Heighton, Diane Ludick, Eochink Fork, and Marbling Costin, Vader of Pennsylvania, of Palmerton.
Move to reappoint.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nostine?
Yes.
District Court Offices for ratification, utilization of constables for coverage in all four district court offices through July 31st, 2020, at the rate of thirteen dollars per hour for the constable fee bill and request of the court.
Move to approval.
I'll second that.
Mr. Honor?
Is this the final step, I guess? Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Planning and development for approval and execution, a modification request for CDDG program contract number 66603, Tim Thorpe Earl, first year 2016, moving five thousand one hundred one dollars, thirty-eight cents from Water Sewer Improvements, Third and Eighth Street, and five thousand two hundred seventy-three dollars, fifty-seven cents from the Water Sewer Improvements School Street to Parks and Recreation Facilities, totaling ten thousand, three hundred seventy-four dollars and ninety-five cents.
Move to approve and execute.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nostine?
Yes.
Union Agreement, ASME residual and court-appointed for ratification, termination of hazard pay for all ASME residual and court-appointed employees to be effective July 1, 2020.
Move to rat.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nostine?
Yes.
Solicitor's Report.
Thank you. Forty-four seventy-six renovation project, construction management for approval and execution, agreement with Boyle Construction Management of Allentown, Pennsylvania, to provide professional services relative to forty-four seventy-six renovation project, including pre-construction services at twenty-four thousand dollars, construction administrative services, one hundred eighty-four thousand to three hundred and forty-five thousand, post-construction fifteen thousand, and reimbursement of expenses.
Move to approve and execute.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nostine?
Yes.
Form Space Design Addendum for approval and execution, addendum to the agreement with Form Space Design of Bethlehem, approved October 17, 2019, for professional services relative to forty-four Susquehanna Street project. This project has evolved to include the seventy-six renovation project. The addendum addresses the changes in list compensation, amending that to a guaranteed maximum cost of two hundred twenty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars plus reimbursable expenses.
Move to approve and execute.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nostine?
Yes.
Parks and Recreation, Mockchuck Lake Park Rate Changes for Approval, Rate Adjustments for the Mockchuck Lake Park for non-county residents only as follows. Daily admission fee increased seven dollars to ten dollars for adult, five dollars to seven dollars for children ages four to twelve years old. Weekends and holidays, ten dollars per adult and seven dollars per children. Tent camping increased from thirty-five dollars a night to forty dollars a night in season. Extra vehicle fee increased from five dollars a car to ten dollars a car. Camping cottages increased from ninety dollars a night to a hundred dollars a night, and extra vehicle fee increased from five dollars a car to ten dollars a car.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Just for everyone's understanding on this requested increase, gate fees and camping fees make up forty-three percent of the budget of six hundred and seventy-six K for Mockchuck Lake Park. We're expecting a decrease of a minimum of seventy-five thousand dollars through the remainder of the operating year for the park, and of course, that could be more significant than what's currently projected. Understanding also that the COVID-19. Understanding also that the COVID-19 had a direct impact on past revenue generation and the requirement to maintain the swimming area at 75% capacity, and likewise, the camping will further reduce revenue generation to get closer, to allow us to get closer, to stay in a balance with our revenue and expenditures. This rate increase that will not impact county residents, but non-county residents only, will help to notably offset that declination in revenue. That's all I have.
Mr. Arner?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Notsstein?
Yes.
Mockchunk Lake Park Restricted Use for Ratification, Resolution 20024, amending our agenda or item 2268, restricting swimming to county residents and season pass holders only until July 8th, 2020 at Mockchunk Lake Park.
Move to ratify.
I'll second on discussion, or just a comment of it. And I mean, we've gotten a lot of input or emails from everybody. And I think this, I mean, to me, this is a good thing. And I think, as the three of us commissioners, I think we should review this weekly on what's going on. Because I said, all the parks that are around us, just to put it plainly, I don't think we should be there overflow parking. You know, I mean, we want people to come here, but we don't want it also flooded in the same, you know. I know people that were going on vacation out of state that can't go there because of the pandemic. And I think once, you know, we don't know what's going to happen next week or the following week. I think this is something we got to keep a handle on on a weekly basis and try to see what we got to do.
Commissioner, I think we're pretty clear we're not going to go below 75. I mean, it's not going to get any better. Therefore, I would recommend that next week when we formally meet, we look at this medium to long term and decide, is this something we have to and should be consistent with? Because this does create some challenges at the park for the rangers and lifeguards as they pass out information to those who unfortunately have to be turned away. And they would like to see some consistency just to make it a little bit easier on them when they engage with visitors.
Yeah, and it is a money issue. We don't want to give money away. But we also want to keep the people of our county safe too.
Yeah. I do have to correct one perspective that's out there that the public has. And the perspective may have been accurate in the first 20, 20, 25 years of Mockchunk Lake Park. But from the general fund, the county only takes $44,000 from the general fund. The remainder of that revenue comes from primarily three sources, which make up about 65% of that. Gate fees, camping fees, and Pocono Mountain Visitors Bureau kind of hotel tax coming back to us. So again, we do have to continue to find that balance of being able to run a park, keep it maintained, keep a high-quality experience, and taking care of the health and safety of county residents and ensuring they have access to what has been their park and should be kept for them. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Arner?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Notsstein?
Yes.
RFP for Drilling Services, well number two at the animal shelter, for acceptance recommendation from carbon engineering to accept a proposal received from Duane Moyer Well Drilling of Blue Heighton to work in conjunction with Cook Geological to complete the required pumping tests on well number two located near the animal shelter. The amount of the proposal is $16,899.99. One other proposal was received from Eichelbergers in the amount of $18,170. And a third company, Odenheimer, did not submit a proposal due to their schedule.
Move to accept.
Second.
Mr. Arner?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Notsstein?
Yes.
Tax Assessment for Approval and Execution, a maintenance renewal agreement with Tyler Technologies covering the universe and land disc support system in the Carbon County Tax Assessment Office. The total fee for services shall be $16,240, which is a $770 increase. The term shall commence July 1, 2020 and continue to June 30, 2021. Additional support periods shall automatically begin for successive one-year terms unless replies are terminated by either party, giving at least 30 days written notice.
Move.
Second.
Mr. Arner?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Notsstein?
Yes.
Nothing further.
Further business?
Yeah, I have two, let me call them contingency motions. I would expect a significant influx of individuals to Mockchunk Lake Park on the 4th and 5th of July. And the county is moving to have contingency plans in place to help assist with the additional pressure that's going to be placed on Mockchunk Lake Park and specifically our rangers who are out there and lifeguards. And so we've been in consultations and have correspondence between Jim Fort Police Department, Summit Hill Borough Police Department, and the Sheriff's Department. So with recognition, this is a time is of the essence, shortened work week, I would make the motion that we move to continue discussions and as necessary, enter into agreements with local law enforcement agencies for increased patrolling and a potential persistent presence at Mockchunk Lake Park on 4 and 5 July.
I'll second that.
Mr. Arner?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Notsstein?
Yes.
And one additional one associated with that, just so we make clear the measures that were taken. I want to move to authorize, as necessary, any transfer of funds that are required to cover the Sheriff Department's personnel costs for presence at Mockchunk Lake Park on 4 and 5 July, resulting in response to the impacts related to the COVID-19 pandemic.
I'll also second that.
Mr. Arner?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Notsstein?
Okay, under further business as well, the county will be instituting the mask policy. That mask will be worn by all employees when they're in common areas as in hallways, et cetera. All visitors will be required to wear masks. As you all well know by now, I'm sure, that the governor has extended his mask-wearing policy for businesses in public anytime you're in contact within six feet of someone. So this is going to be in line. And this is all county-owned and leased facilities, all offices that are basically run by the county will fall under this mask policy. We have to protect ourselves. We have to protect the public, especially with the court system. I know the sheriff is in favor of this. And, you know, it's something we have to continue to do because of the going green. People think automatically they do not have to wear a mask. We've had an increase in cases, not too bad in the county here yet. But with tourism season and everyone coming in like we're just talking about with belt fill, the overflow trying to get the mock junk and the campers coming in and everything, we have to, we all have to follow the policy because the last thing any of us want to do is go back into the yellow or even the red because we aren't taking a proper safety precaution. People traveling outside the area, especially in areas where they are going back to red and maintain their social distancing and be careful who you're, surround yourself with, even family members at times. When they travel out of the area and come back, they could be carrying that disease without your knowledge until it's too late. So please follow the guidelines. And we will enforce it here in the county. So try and keep everyone safe. We, last thing we need is an office. Any of the offices here cannot afford to lose people because of the disease. Or if we have to quarantine the whole office, that would be a disaster. So please wear your mask. Okay? That's all I have on there. Oh, let me just discuss the bid we awarded the tank for the tank project. The actual cost of the tank cleaning and that was, the total project was $156,000. The water alone for that project, bringing in the backup pumps, the water supply, all the necessary precautions that they have to take to maintain a constant water flow during the possible 18 days of shutdown while the tank is being rehabbed is almost $90,000 just for the water alone. The equipment, I think, was only about, and the work on the tank itself was only around 56, a little bit higher, about $66,000. So, yeah, it's an extremely expensive project. The bid we opened today is just for the piping, et cetera, the plumbing, the control system, pumps, et cetera. They will be concurrent so we don't have to pay twice to have the shutdown and the water supply coming in. And I think the retirement board and commissioners have to take a real serious look at the possibility or I would strongly recommend a second tank. Just this one project now has cost us $90,000 almost in doing this. Getting a backup well in place is getting rather expensive for, should we lose one well and the water treatment? We don't know what that's going to cost yet. But this tank doesn't, is not going to last forever. We have some minor leaks that are going to be taken care of, cleaning the sediment out. And we have not been doing a good job of maintenance on that tank. And this is something we should do periodically, such as all water authorities have to do the same thing, shut the tanks down, clean out the sediment, inspect and thoroughly clean the inside of the tanks. So that bid that we awarded today does include the water testing and even after the project is done. It still takes a couple of days until you have all the DEP approvals and system flushed and flushed out and decontaminated, et cetera, sanitized. So it's been rather expensive. But I strongly suggest to the commissioners and the retirement board, we take a real strong look at putting a tank in because it's going to happen again. Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, commissioners' reports. Mr. Arner?
Okay, I was not going to until last night give a commissioner's report. But I got a phone call from a business that the grant that we are in the process of going through, I think a lot of people are confused. There's probably like six, seven different grants out there. This grant that is, that the three commissioners are in charge of here are completely in control of us. You know, and that's where the people are like getting confused. They're going on and think, what's this grant? They think the grant that's out there is ours. And what we're doing to try to do is put things together. In fact, we're having a meeting probably this afternoon to go over things and try to get things in place. Now, my understanding is like from the beginning of this, that this grant was supposed to be available by the 15th. I mean, I don't know if we're going to get it by then. And I have to apologize to both of you guys because I've been working on something to try to make it easier for us. And what I did, I actually made a spreadsheet up. And it has tabulation on it that what's going out, what our numbers are coming down, that we know as the commissioners, when it's presented to us, that we know how much is left, how much was spent, who it's going to. And there's also something on here that we can put a bracket in here that if we get a large amount, that it can be going by percentage. You know what I mean? We don't know what we're going to run into. We could get 50 people putting in for $80,000 or we could get 500 putting in for $100. So I think we're trying to make this easier for the people. You know, this is something like they've been saying, well, they got to click on three different things to find the application and then it all understand it. This is going to be easy. I mean, if you put in for a PP items for $86, you should be eligible. And from that, from that, and I've been working on this for probably two weeks. And last night, from this conversation with this guy, I actually made a form that we're going to go over. And like I said, this is just a preliminary thing. And I'm sure the solicitor's going to say there's no signature on here to verify that all of that information is correct. But that's something for us, I think we got to make it easy for the people. And one other, I will give a comment. No, the media cannot have this. And if, when it comes out, this, you people will be the first ones. Because I mean, you's have been phenomenal with us. You know, and you's helped us advertise and things. And you do get the word out for us. So when this, when we verify this, I would say you three will probably get the first email, hopefully.
They're waiting for the email.
Well, and that's what I said, like, we're trying to get it on the website and get it out there. But we constantly, like yesterday, everybody was calling about, well, where do we put the application and where we do this? And they're calling about other grants, you know, just like the one that Rick put in for. You know, this is all different grants. But, and people got to remember, this here is totally controlled by the, by the three commissioners. I mean, we're going to be the ones that are saying, okay, this is who gets it. And I said, you know, and we want to get it out the door. I think Wayne said last week he wants to get it out the door as soon as possible. I mean, these people have been suffering for five months. So as soon as we have something together, we got to get that money out. Thank you.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yeah, one verbal errata. The amount of transfer from the general fund is not 44,000, but 48.5,000, all right? So just under 49,000. Also in reference to Mockchunk Lake Park, just want to clarify that the lifeguard chairs will be manned beginning this weekend. We do have six hired lifeguards and one is pending. So starting this weekend, lifeguards will be in the chairs and all those authorized access will be expected to pay. And again, you know, with the action we took today, it's limited to county residents, which is $3 for adults, $2 for children. Oh, Senior Farmers Market. Rocky just got an update, Wayne got an update. Already, we've had 1,150 applicants. And, you know, a few months ago, we felt it necessary to embrace social media. And we leveraged working with the Area Agency on Aging social media to get the information out. While our numbers right now are about the same as last year in regards to the quantity of applications, of applications, the speed in which they've come in has been notable. And I've gotta throw a little analytic number out there just to recognize what we've done here with social media. And social media engagement rates, specifically Facebook, if you have a point five engagement rate or better, that's considered good. On this particular Senior Farmers Market, social media engagement, we had, we had over eighty-six hundred people who we are able to reach out and touch virtually. We had over eight hundred and sixty-seven actual engagements. That comes to a nine point nine five engagement rate, which is pretty phenomenal for social media and mostly for novices who truly have just stepped into it, you know, in a crisis situation. So good job to the Area Agency on Aging getting the information to us, and then RIT folks who helped us get it out there and get the word out. That's all I have.
Mr. Nolte.
Yeah, just a couple of real quick items. I wanna thank all those people that send emails and everything, supporting the Commissioners on their decision to make this county residents only. Everyone was positive in how much more they enjoyed, enjoyed the lake because of restricting it to county residents and even offered or suggested that they'd be willing to pay more. But they're already paying for it in taxpayer dollars compared to those that are coming in. So I think we were being fair to the county residents in increasing the non-county resident fees today. So, but thank all those people. I'm not even sure how many we got. It's probably fifty maybe. That's just emails that we received here. So it didn't mention that the correspondence, it was in support of county residents only. Unfortunately, because of the finances, we just can't restrict it to county residents. We have to pay the bills as well, and we wanna dial back to the taxpayers for that as well. So, and the other thing, I think Rocky missed it when he said about six or seven other grants out there, probably around fifteen, twenty, and they all had their rules and regulations. If we were to, I mean, it gets quite confusing for all of us, even trying to keep up with it here. Every day, we, almost every day, we see a new one coming out or a new regulation. We saw another one this morning from the Community Council Foundation. And again, we'll go back to the, there's agencies or nonprofits and some entities can apply for actually two or three, maybe more, grants, you know, because they fall into so many different categories. So I'd like to know where that money was before when we really needed it.
That's why, that's why I said when we have this money, we gotta use it. I don't think it's too often that the Commissioners get money to distribute like this.
No. Okay, that's all I have, so meeting adjourned. I think we answered Amy's question today. Alyssa?
Yeah, so I guess first with the county adopting the governor's mask policy, did you guys have a mask policy before, or was it just kinda recommended? What's the difference?
Yeah, we did have a mask policy or requirement.
So now it's just kinda making it official?
Yeah, we're just keeping, enforcing it.
Um, and then?
Continuing it too, you know?
What was that?
We're just continuing it.
Oh, okay, gotcha. And then as far as Moxchuck Lake, I just wanted to confirm, so it's through July eighth? Because I think your email says July seventh.
Well, seventh, on the eighth, it'll go back to, you know?
Until July eighth, got it. Got it. And then I know like the last weekend, I think it was Sunday, I guess, it was, like you guys said, you know, a lot of people at Beltsville, are you guys seeing people on the weekends coming over to Moxchuck? Are they having to turn a lot of people away?
Yes, they are. I don't have the numbers. I think the one day, I forget what day it was, they turned away eighty-nine out of, out of the people coming in. I don't know if, how many might have been from out of state, but eighty-nine people in one day.
And are people, I mean, are they understanding of the?
Most of them are. They think they've been pretty understanding, however, as, as the heat goes up and tension mounted and the kids scream in the backseat, you know, there's stress on those drivers and parents.
You wanna see something go out to Beltsville this weekend before noon?
I'll pass on that.
And you'll see a, the amount of people with the weather being hot, the amount of people that come to that lake from all over, and people trying to, and I understand Franklin Township is gonna be enforcing the parking along the lake and on back roads and everything else out there because it is just so overwhelming. I was out, I think I was last week when I told you last Thursday afternoon, I believe it was, when we were out at Beltsville for a water rescue, I couldn't believe how many people were out there in the swimming area during the week. Parking lot was almost full, you know? So yeah, it's, it's gonna be a disaster, I'm afraid, because there's so many people being turned away. And I know there are plenty of extra patrols on and extra park rangers on this weekend as well.
I think those are the only things I have on this chat. Oh, and this other, so this is a grant that you guys, another grant that you guys are applying for, for additional COVID funds, right? The PCCD grant?
There he is.
You wanna explain that to the listener?
Thank you, Commissioners. As I said, there's numerous grants that are out there right now for COVID. This one was specific for law enforcement. Kind of best way to explain it was we did a three-pronged approach on the grant application. The first prong was reimbursing funds to the different law enforcement agencies who had purchased law enforcement, I mean, PPE for the pandemic. The second piece of the funds will be used to buy a large quantity of all these type of supplies, and where they disperse them across all the law enforcement agencies across the county. The third aspect is provide current testing for people in the correction facility. And we have a very small correction facility, you know, we have, a rundown facility has to really worry about, quarantine people, do inmates coming in, space is very limited. So the ability to be able to test those inmates will be able to allow us to keep that jail safe, the COVID out of jail, and to properly manage the population.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Alyssa?
Nothing at all.
Kelly?
Will you consider extending that further?
Possibly. Yeah, good possibility.
So just, maybe just keep going week to week?
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I have.
We'll discuss week to week, but that doesn't mean we'll extend it a week or two days or, but we'll definitely, as Rocky said it, Commissioner Nolte, we'll definitely be talking on a regular basis. This is a significant issue with county residents and us.
Yeah, and I, I think like my, my reasoning on it was, for like, this weekend is a big weekend. I mean, it's a big holiday, and I don't know if, maybe I'm being selfish to our county residents, that I think maybe we should try to keep it to them. And then like next week, we're gonna have to start opening things up because it is a money issue, you know, and if people social distance and, you know, hopefully we'll be able to keep this park open like that forever. Not that we, I mean, not forever, but keep it going and progressing, that it would be up to a hundred percent. But we don't, my point of it is, I don't want it to stop after this week, you know what I mean? It's like you see, you know, beaches in Florida or wherever it is, and they're closed. You know, I don't want it to get to that point. I want people to enjoy their self and just keep opening it up as we go, and then we can get back to a hundred percent.
The other item on probably next week's agenda will be the extension, most likely, of our disaster declaration. And one of the main reasons for that is, well, the way things are going to begin with, but the expenses under that CARES Act are up till December, end of December. So we will be looking at probably extending that disaster declaration until that time, till the end of the year possibly. Pretty sure that's the way we're gonna go, but that'll be on next week's agenda. And I strongly encourage all the municipalities to do likewise. There's quite a few that have not, too many that have not re-adopted what they have already. But, you know, if you don't wanna do it for that life at time, I would strongly recommend at least two, three months and, and see how things play out in the meantime.
I have one other thing. Were you guys, was there, consulted all, or did you play any role with the portfolio being canceled? Was that something that the JTTA reached out to you guys as well, or is that kinda all that?
We've had, we were part of discussions with JTTA, Pocono Mountain Visitors Bureau, CCEDC, and other stakeholders in the local community in regards to that. Absolutely.
And those Zoom meetings are gonna continue at least two weeks from this week, the fourteenth, I think, is the next Zoom meeting on Tuesday. So we're in contact with the, all the local chambers and those organizations, Vacation Bureau, et cetera, and hospital updates, we're still doing all that stuff there every two weeks now. Okay? Nothing else? All right, stay safe. Come back next week with all your favorites. Don't forget to pay.[1759.83]